And assessors, Karen, myself, Natalie, and Ozzy. And we have a duty to make sure that we're assessing properties correctly. That's in statute. And we also have a responsibility to be equitable between property owners. So we're assessing people where they're at, and no one is paying more than their fair share, and no one's paying less. So, and we're going to talk more about that as we get into it. So some, just some basics about where we are at currently. We committed in July of 2023, we declared a state ratio, state certified ratio of 93%. I'm going to explain more about what that means a little later. And our mill rate was 22.75. And we declared that mill rate two years in a row, and I think there was some surprise that we were able to do that. And there were some kind of some interesting reasons why we were able to do that. We made some targeted market adjustments to property in 2022. In 2022, it was mostly about single-family market adjustments. In '23, we made other adjustments to multifamilies and some other classes of properties. And that was basically the primary reason why we were able to hold the mill rate and in a relatively flat budget as well. So it's just some statistics about where our value is. In real estate, we have 9,461 parcels. Land is assessed at 597 million and building at just over $2 billion. So before exemptions, we have $2.6 billion in real estate value in the city of Auburn, Maine. Exemptions make up a big part of value or exempt property. So roughly 20% or one-fifth of our property is exempt from taxation. And that's, so after exemptions are removed, our taxable real estate value is $2.1 billion. We also assess personal property. We have 1,092 open accounts, and we're gearing up for doing our business personal property canvas very soon. And we check those accounts and make sure they're all current, catch new businesses, close old ones that are closed. And we have a taxable value of $108 million in personal property. Businesses are eligible for something called the Business Equipment and Tax Exemption, and that's actually the largest part of value. $210 million is Bette exempt. It's really important that we're correctly assessing those assets, however, because we get reimbursement from the state on that value. So it's critical that we do our job well when it comes to assessing all property, but getting Betty right is important. So our total personal property valuation is $320 million. And it should be noted that when we ratio, when our declared certified ratio is under 100%, we have to adjust our personal property and other types of property as well to that ratio, and it actually lessens what our total valuation would normally be in those circumstances. And I think we're going to get more into that as well. So valuation, when you, when you put it all together, our real estate value, our personal property value, the reimbursement that we get from things like homestead from the state of Maine, the reimbursement that we get for our Bette, you put that all together, and that creates our valuation base. And you can see that there's been a, since 2019, a trend of, an upward trend in our property value. This is due to a number of things. It can be due to new construction. It can be due to new property. We should also appreciate that when we assess year to year, we're seeing increases in property value. We're also seeing net decreases in some cases for demolitions or property conditions that are, that are adjusted. But the, the general trend has been to go up. In 2019, we did a project around Taylor Pond because we were seeing high sales around Taylor Pond proportionately to other properties. So we did a full, basically a full equalization. We inspected all those properties, and we made market adjustments. And that year, we increased value by 18 million. Okay? So that was, that was kind of a bump, along with all the other normal adjustments. In 2021, a lot was going on. We were seeing kind of a real estate market that was escalating quickly after COVID, and we, we kind of didn't do very much at all because we were waiting to see what would happen. It was, it was uncertain if the market was going to continue going up, or if it was going to drop precipitously. So we, it was a kind of a wait-and-see situation. Well, it turns out the market continued to increase. In 2022, we were seeing some, ag land was, was selling much higher than we were assessing it at. Single-family properties was selling much higher than, than we were assessing it at. So we made market adjustments, and it increased value by 198 million with the market adjustments that we made, and, and all the normal adjustments as well. So mostly, that was single-family and ag adjustments. Following, in 2022, and following the trends that we were, that we were observing and analyzing, we were also seeing increases in multifamily properties, which has continued to increase even since this analysis, and that increased value even more in 2023. So that valuation base continues to increase. And, you know, it's also important to note that in 2021, we first adjusted the certified ratio down to 93%, and we've managed to hold that as well. Some of you have got this bit from us before. You've, you've probably heard it many times from us before, but others haven't. When we, the, the state determines that we should be at 100% of market value in our assessments. That's the target that we strive for. Market value is, just value is determined to be market value, or the prices that properties are selling for. If the assessed value and the sales price are equal, okay, in this case, each are $200,000, which is probably a poor example in today's market, we have a ratio of 1, or 100%, if you will. The lower, the higher the sale price, the lower the ratio is going to be. So if the assessed value is 200,000 and the sale price is 250, then we have a ratio of 0.8 or 80%. We're actually seeing some ratios for some properties, which we'll show you a little bit later in the presentation, that are at 50%, which means that the sale price is double what we're assessing it at. And if you look at, if you look at the trend in our ratios, we send a sales analysis to the, we send a list of all of our sales. Actually, the state already has a list of our sales, and they determine a certified ratio based on those sales and our assessed values. We, the last citywide revaluation was in 2007, and from 2007 to 2020, we actually were declaring 100% because we could, because we were in that margin where, where it was, it was tolerated, and we could, and there were dips over time, but nothing as extreme as we're seeing lately. In 2018, the declared ratio that the state told us, and that's what these numbers are, was 99%, and it dropped to 91% in 2020. Those three years, we were able to continue to declare at 100% because it was within the tolerance. In 2021, the ratios continued to drop, and it's quite, quite a big drop to 88%, and we had to drop our, our declared ratio to 93%. In 2022, we talked about the single-family market adjustments that we made, and in 2023, the multifamily market adjustments we made. Even though we had a state declared ratio of 83% and 73%, we had an effective ratio of 93% because of what we did, because of the action we took as a city to adjust those single-family and multifamily properties and a few other properties as well. Even with those adjustments, we're looking forward to what's going to happen next. In 2024, the state determined that our ratio was at 71%, which is, which is big. Okay? That's, that's a big change because the sales are continuing to escalate, and the market has risen. I'd like to think it's plateaued, but we, we, we would have liked to have thought that the last three years, to be frank. But it's, it's definitely higher, and the market adjustments that we made, basically there are more adjustments to come, unfortunately. So we're, we're at 71%, and we have to decide in 2024 what we're going to do about that. And I, we've actually done an analysis because the state's sales ratio is actually a couple of years behind what, when it's determined. So 2025, it's even bleaker. It's looking like 68%. And that's based on numbers that we just provided to the state. But our goal is that everything, because certain properties are within, when, single-family properties are at 100% and say, commercial is at, oh, excuse me, when, when, when commercial industrial say they're at 98% and single-family's at 70%, then you have an inequity that we, that we have to kind of deal with. Because in that case, the commercial property owner is actually paying a higher tax burden, if you will. So our goal, of course, is that everything is in balance. And that's not just single-family. It includes multifamily, commercial, industrial, land, and other classes of properties. And we analyze the sales. It's more difficult with commercial industrial because we have fewer sales, but they're, they're definitely have a higher ratio, which means they're closer to what we're currently assessing them at. But there are certain subclasses, like, for instance, restaurants are selling higher than maybe an industrial property. So those are inequities that we also have to correct. So, so by doing that, we're kind of making sure that we're sharing that tax burden in an equitable way, and, and that's what our, what our goal is. And from here, I'll let Karen take over.
So as Joe's been talking about, we have several things that happen when the ratio drops. We lose valuation because we have to ratio everything. We also lose value, the taxpayer is going to lose value in their exemptions. This shows you at 100% what the homestead and veterans is, what's allowed by the state, 25,000 and 6,000. It shows you what they're currently getting at 93%, that 23,250 and 55,80. As Joe showed you in the, in the, huh.
Bar graph.
Yeah, bar graph, sorry. We are below that. We are at 71% according to the state certi, I mean, the state ratio that they had certified for us. We are allowed a 10% margin. So 78%, if we do nothing, if we don't make any adjustments at all, the highest that we can declare is going to be 78%. 78% is going to drop those exemptions down even further. We don't want that to happen. That's a burden on the taxpayers. So our goal is to not let that happen, and we have some ideas on what we can do so that we don't have to drop that ratio. So again, Joe was talking about ratios. These are September sales of single-family properties. This is just a small sample of what we have, but it's a very good sample, and it's, we're at 60%, 60% on single-family for our ratios in the month of September. And it's not just the month of September. We do sales ratio studies constantly. We have to. We have to make sure all of the classes are being treated equitably, and we have to be aware of where our ratio is because we have to prepare if we have to do something to increase those ratios. So, single-family, there you have it. They're at 60% according to our sales. And on average, the single-family homes are selling for 127,000 over what we have them assessed at. On the next one, this is our multifamilies. It's just a small sample because it's only September, but it is indicative of what's happening for all of our sales. Joe said the sale prices are continuing to climb. We are seeing this especially in the multifamily sales market. They are selling incredibly high. We can't keep up with them. We are at 50% of assessed value versus what they are selling for. That's quite bleak. And again, those are selling upwards to 178,000 more than what we have them assessed at. So what do we do? Like I said, we could declare 78% for our certified ratio. We would be dropping everything. All of our valuation base would drop dramatically. Taxpayer is going to lose out on their exemptions as well. If we do that and lower our valuation base, it is likely that the mill rate will increase because we're not going to drop the budget. So that, that mill rate will increase. Like I said, we're going to lose all that taxable value. We're not correcting those equity issues between the classes if we just drop the ratio. We have to maintain equity, or classes of taxpayers are going to be paying a higher share of the taxes that are due, and others are going to be paying a lower share. So lowering the ratio is not going to solve that problem. We can make market adjustments, which is what we have been doing over the past few years. It's a Band-Aid. It's not something that we want to continue to do and have as a long-term solution. It's not a long-term solution. It's just getting us to where we need to be. We can, if we assume a stable budget, and we make those market adjustments, if the fall, in a perfect world, we hold that ratio, and we hold that mill rate as well. If we do make these market adjustments, that would be our goal. Hold that ratio at 93%, hold that mill rate at 2275, which is going to take some tough work on the budget because we're going to have to make sure that the budget doesn't go up too much. But if we make these market adjustments, we are going to bring in a tremendous amount of valuation. So that's, that's going to help with holding that mill rate. We can preserve the exemptions for the taxpayers if we make these market adjustments and hold that ratio, and we don't lose any personal property valuation by lowering that ratio. Now, we can tell you that, oh, okay, I missed a slide here. Yep, okay. So we've talked about the ratio, we've talked about the mill rate, we've talked about what we need to do to hold it for now, not long-term, but maybe hold it for now. We want to be, it is our job as assessors to be at 100% of market value. That's what the state tells us, where, what, that's our job. We maintain 100% of market value. Equalization brings all the classes in equitable together. That's what we strive for. And I hate to say this, but the only way that we are going to obtain total equalization is a revaluation. A revaluation is going to bring all of the classes together equitable. It's going to fix the cost tables so that they are up to date. It's going to bring everyone up to 100% of value, which is what we're striving for. Revaluations occur, and everybody assumes that taxes will increase tremendously. What really happens is we increase the valuation base to such an extent that, yes, some people are going to see tax increase, others are going to maintain because we're going to drop that ratio, and it will drop a lot, especially in this market because we, our ratio is really so much lower than it should be. The rule of thumb, and it works sometimes, and sometimes it doesn't, a third go up, a third stay the same, and a third will go down. So, and we achieve what we're trying to achieve, and we maintain what we're supposed to, what we are supposed to be doing. From the main revenue website, it says, "A revaluation is a process which creates a solid base of inventory for tax purposes. According to the main constitution, all taxes upon real and personal estate assessed by authority of this state shall be apportioned and assessed equally according to the just value thereof." As assessors, we have to follow the main constitution. "In order to apportion the tax burden equally, the assessors must establish assessed valuations in accordance with just value." Just value is synonymous with market value. That's from main revenue. So our suggestion is to, this year, make some market adjustments, do some equalization, try our best to maintain or be as close to 93% for a certified ratio as we possibly can be, hold that mill rate if at all possible. That's for this year. That's probably for next year. Do the same thing because even if we, you can go to the next one. Oh, okay. I thought my timeline was on there. Even if we scheduled or started a revaluation process, we are years out from when it will be completed. So after Joe, you can go back, after Joe explains this one slide to you, I'm going to give you a tentative timeline, what we estimate to be for a revaluation.
So, so in our roles, we're very mindful that revaluation can be scary for people. We've made market adjustments in, over the past few years, and it's caused some pain, quite frankly, for, for taxpayers. Our goal is to be fair and to be accurate, and, and when we do our job right, we equalize that value, and it lessens the impact. For instance, we were able to hold the mill rate, which actually was beneficial because we were able to make those market adjustments. Other communities haven't made market adjustments, and, and their mill rates increase, or their ratios dropped. So we're trying to do the best thing in accordance to law. We borrowed this slide from the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy. If you don't know the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy, they're kind of a think tank that concerns themselves with policy around tax assessment and land use, and, and they, they talk about, one of the first things when, when you're trying to provide property relief for homeowners is to start with an accurate assessment. And that's what we're striving for. We're striving for accuracy, and then you can build from there. In this book, and anyone can borrow it if they ever want to, also talks about other policy issues that can help, types of exemptions, circuit breaker programs, things like that that are, that our friends in the main state legislature, legislature could help us with. But, but again, fundamentally, the, the thing you start with is an accurate assessment when you're trying to have relief for property owners. And, and one of the elements of a reassessment or of correct and equitable valuation is, is doing those equalization projects. And the longer you're out from a revaluation project, the more likely you are to drift from either being, I, I, they used the word overtax. I would like, I would like the word overvalued feels better to me. And it's an element of time. So the longer that you, you go between valuation projects, the more likely it is that you're going to have inequity in, in errors. And we find ourselves in a situation where we're undervaluing properties because of what's been happening in the market. The, you know, the, people tell me the market's dropping, and I, I would love for that to be true because that would make our life a whole lot easier in declaring these ratios. If it dropped 20% right now, we're still not where we need to be. So, so that's, that's a concern and a consideration that we have to, that we have to make. So accurate assessments are really essential, and the more time passes, and the last full revale that we did was in 2007. In the interim, though, we have made adjustments. One of the first projects I was involved with when I came to work in the city of Auburn was to evaluate condos, condo value, and we actually dropped value in that case. So we, we try to be as responsive as we can, whether it's up or down, to be accurate in, in our assessments. We've made ag adjustments, we've made single-family adjustments, we've made market adjustments. And in some ways, by, by being responsive, we're also going to mitigate those big swings if we do do a revale. So in the interim, by making market adjustments, we're lessening the impact of a full equalization that we may have to do down the road. So, for what it's worth, and again, if anyone wants to borrow, borrow this booklet, it's, it's excellent. So, and on to Karen. Oh, oh, just one other thing. When, when we make market adjustments, that's a flat adjustment overall. Our KAMA is based on land value. Our KAMA is our computer-assisted mass appraisal system, our software, is based on, it has land tables, it has building tables and subtables underneath that, and depreciation tables. And those are things that we have to get right. So the longer in between correcting those tables, the more they get out of whack, and then those are the things that we try to fix in a revale. So they all have to be accurate to be credible.
So when we started, we said, this is where we were, this is where we are, this is where we're going. So we are now in the position where we will make adjustments this year. We are determining right now where those adjustments will be. They will be market adjustments, and, and I can't really give you any more information about that right at the moment because we're still doing all of our research and our studies, but there will be adjustments coming. That will continue to be done until we have this revaluation. Now, I reached out to a few revaluation companies because I know that across the state, a tremendous amount of municipalities are in the process of, or they are scheduled to have, complete revaluations. And there are only a few of the revaluation companies that are large enough and skilled enough to do a city the size of Auburn. Obviously, the Auburn staff would be able to assist in the revaluation because we are all qualified to do some of the work as well, but it's just such a large project, we would absolutely positively have to hire a revaluation company to come in and assist us to do it. So like I said, I, I reached out to a few of the larger ones, heard back from a couple, and one of them told me that they are booked out three years. That means if we sent out an RFP this year in February, and we probably, well, we'd have to have a pre-proposal conference, then you go into reviewing your bids, and then you have to select the company, and then you have to start your revale. And a revale for a city this size, we are under the assumption it will be a good two years to start to finish, a solid two years before you'll get those values put together. So now we're looking at 2029, if, if we could even follow this timeline, before a complete revaluation will be done. Between now and 2029, can you imagine what's going to happen to our values? We are going to make so many adjustments, our equity is going to be completely out of whack, but what are you going to do? I mean, that's about the quickest that, that we can possibly get this done. So I, we, we are asking that you please consider a revaluation, see, understand where we are and where we're going, and how long it's going to take us to get there. And we're happy to answer any of your questions that we can. If we can't answer them now, we will find you the answers to them. But we really need your consideration for this because we are at a critical point in time. I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council?
I had a, I had a question. Thank you guys for presenting that. At what stage in the timeline is there like kind of a, I understand it's not, you know, you can't predict what's going to happen with the revaluation, but at what stage is there kind of like a rough pro forma that gives a sense of to what percentage valuations may increase, even if it's a range, or, you know? At what stage in the timeline do you start to talk about numbers and real impacts of the revaluation?
I would say that when the inspections are complete, and you have the, all the property tables updated, that's when we're going to be able to give you, not we, the revaluation company and us together, would be able to give you some idea of what type of valuation we would bring in.
That, to make sure I'm clear on this, that valuation, because the market rate adjustments that are going on now, I'm assuming are just a flat percentage applied against are going on now, I'm assuming are just a flat percentage applied against a particular class?
That's correct.
Right? So there's no actual valuation of each property. And that won't take, regardless of whether there's market rate adjustments, the variability from where they are at the time that revaluation starts, it may be very different depending upon an individual property as it's reevaluated, having had these market rate adjustments applied. Some, those market rate adjustments may drive some properties to be overvalued and some may still be undervalued.
Yeah, that's correct. And in fact, there's a lot of different axes there. So we're looking at neighborhoods, how are values being affected in certain areas? Have the neighborhoods that we would find in the past changed? Are there things that are happening? Is there decline in certain neighborhoods? And then the individual properties themselves. So when we, our best, the type of revaluation that we prefer is boots on the ground. We're inspecting properties. Has the condition changed? Has it decreased? Has it improved? Are there additions that, I mean, we're constantly reviewing that now, but those are the kinds of things that you try to get done all at the same time in a revale. So there are a lot of dimensions to what we do in an evaluation. And different property types may have different evaluation methods. For instance, we have special use properties that may require a specialized appraisal. We don't just show up at the door and do it. We have to have income analyses and maybe cost analyses, depending on the type of property is. So it's involved. And yes, you may have, you know, some properties over here that are higher and some over here that are lower. And that's really the goal of it, is to get to the facts.
Counsel Milks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The way that, if you're going to buy a business, commercial property, that process is very, very different than if you're going to buy a house, the assessment part of that. Now, do you guys, when you're assessing commercial properties, you say, hey, they're at 100%? Is that the value of the business?
Not necessarily, no, not the business. It's the real estate value that we're concerned with.
Right. So how do you, as opposed to residential properties, pretty straightforward? How's it compare to the other ones that are sold? What's it got, you know, three bedrooms, one bath? A commercial property is only as valuable as a business that you can put into it. How do you, how do you say that it's at equal value or it's at 100%?
So there are three different approaches to value. There's the sales comparison approach, which is generally regarded as the most reliable. So if a real estate, if a hotel sells, and it sells for $2 million, that's probably a pretty good indication of its market value, its real estate market. It's not necessarily the going concern value, which we don't estimate. Maybe we don't have sales of a commercial property. We might consider the income approach, the leases of the property or the income attributed to that business. Maybe it's a special use property that is very difficult to assess and we rely on a cost approach. You know, how much did it cost? What's the value of the land? You know, so there are different dimensions. A complex property would be the hydro facilities, okay? Those require very specialized, you know, discounted cash flow analysis of that, of the energy production out there may be how we get to that. And frankly, we're not experts on those things and we would rely on other appraisals to do that. So, commercial properties all over the place. I couldn't tell you, you know, if we were to do TAM brands, that's a big job and we have to get that right. And it's, they're not making more TAM brands, so you don't have comparable sales out there.
Right. But my point is, is that we're making the statement that we're at 100% for commercial properties and therefore, we are going to raise and adjust market rate on residential properties. And therefore, raise the taxes on those people. Because we know that to get equity in properties, we're at 100% over on in this class of--
We're near 100%. We're not at--
For all intents and, you know, there's a 20-point difference, what you're saying, or 30-point difference between the two.
Okay.
But there's a huge discrepancy on how you value that class of property. And now what you're saying is, you're going to move this other class because these guys are at 100.
There's not--
You're saying that they're at 100% or 98% or whatever the number is for commercial properties.
Okay. So our CAMA system, our CAMA system bases all of the valuations on cost. That's how the CAMA system is set up. Our commercial properties are valued by cost. That's the primary valuation for that. Our, our residentials are also valued by cost. They're all valued exactly the same. Our tables are set up in the CAMA system. We plug in the information and that's how they're done. Now, we are saying, you're right, we are saying that based on sales, we're at 60% on residential, we're at 50% on multi-units, and we are, it fluctuates. We're not, we're higher than that for a ratio on our commercial. If we don't have sales to compare to those commercials--
That's my point.
--that we're relying on that cost approach for that ratio. And yes, they're inequitable. That's exactly right.
Where are you getting the costs?
The costs we're set up during the revaluation, all the cost tables were put into the computer. That's where those costs are coming from and they were all set at the same time.
By who? By the reva--
By our Patriot properties who own the CAMA system. They came in and did a study on all the costs in our area and they set those cost tables.
I think, if I can follow up on that, I think Counselor Milks' question wasn't who actually put the data in the system, it's where did the data come from?
So the data, like, it was established at the last revaluation. And actually, this is a good argument for why we need to analyze it again, to make sure that those commercial properties are correctly loaded--
I got that. I got, my question is, is you're saying, we are going to reevaluate.
Yes.
And that sounds like I have no say in that.
No, no, you absolutely have say in it. That's why we're here. We're asking you--
Are we going to vote on it?
--consider giving us a, yes, you would have to--
You're asking for a reevaluation.
Yes.
I'm saying, you said, we are adjusting the market. We're going to make an adjustment.
Yes.
If I might clarify it a bit here. So if I understand it, it's two separate issues. So the--
I understand.
Right. So the first issue is, given the current ratios, the proposal from the assessing department is that we again apply a market rate adjustment. It sounds like it's not going to be to commercial and it would be to multifamily and residential. And I think to Counselor Milks' point, if that valuation went up, just because there's multiple variables here, let's just say the budget would have stayed the same, if the valuation and up the mill rate would go down, and the effect would be that the tax, the real dollar taxes paid by the commercial establishments would decrease and the real dollar taxes paid by the resident and multifamily would increase. Did I get the point you were making?
Well, that's another point. My question is, there's two questions. Are we going to do a reevaluation? That's one question. My second, my question is, is you said, we are going to adjust valuations.
I did say that.
Is that a statement or is that a request from us to approve?
That's a statement. We are going to make market adjustments this year.
Okay. Then my question is, is, I don't, I, my question is, is I want to see the data on how you are assessing that commercial properties are 100% because that's the reason you're doing it, to make equity in the properties.
No, that's not the reason we're doing it. The reason we are doing these market adjustments is because the single-family ratios are 60%. The multifamilies are at 50%. We can't leave them there or we're going to drop our overall citywide ratio down to 78%.
Okay.
We're not going to allow that to happen.
And what's going to happen if that happens?
If we drop our ratio?
If we just don't do anything?
Yeah. We lose--
And we allow this crazy market to, and we don't tax our people anymore.
Right.
They're already getting hammered with inflation. They're getting hammered with cost increases everywhere. If we decide not to do anything and let our ratio go down, what happens?
We lose millions in taxable value.
Our mill rate's going up and they're going to still have, see a tax increase.
Right.
Either way, they're going to see a tax increase.
And to clarify that--
Hold on a second, if I can clarify that for a minute. I think that's an assumption. I think that if we were to do nothing, I understand what Joe is saying, is that we would lose taxable value and our exemptions, the value of the exemptions would decrease. Everything else being equal, if the valuation didn't increase and the mill rate stayed the same, they would pay the same taxes that they are now. So I don't think, at least in my mind, looking at the mill, I don't think people in the community really care that much about the mill rate. They care about what the bill is that's coming at the end of the year and how much cash they've got to send to the city for their taxes. But if I understand this, the assessing department is requesting these market adjustments, the council could decide not to do that, as long as they understood the ramifications, and there are negative ramifications. And the question of a revaluation is a completely separate question. If the, if the council chose to do this, given this timeline, we would get to a revaluation at some point. If we decide not to do that, these market rate adjustments would have to continue because at some point, the state, as I understand it with this, if I understood the bar chart, you know, like the 2024 71% is because we've made market rate adjustments. The state hasn't got caught up to that. So we've said, hey, we made market rate adjustments, we're at 93%. That's now going down. If we do nothing at some point, isn't the state going to take some action?
To put us closer to 100%? Is that what you mean, Mr. Mayor?
Correct.
The state can't mandate our assessing practices, but we have a duty as assessors to make sure we're being equitable. And again, that fairness and equity, that all begins with, so if a property is selling for $120,000 more than we're assessing it at, we have inequity. And we, and, under the law, it's our duty to try to fix that inequity. And arguably, you maintain a good ratio, you help with the mill rate, you help with the taxable value. In this example, we're ratioing at 93%. We lost $22 million in personal property value, 22 million. If we were ratioing a lot more than that, we would lose quite a bit more. There are certain types of properties that declare value, we have to ratio those as well, like CMP, other properties, we would have to, so it becomes a spiral. We lose value, we lose value, we lose value if we're not at the right ratio. And we report our data to the state in something called municipal valuation return, the MVR. And they have that information, then they make decisions about what our ratio is and, you know, some, you know, some valuation can be lost and some reimbursements can be withheld if they don't think we're doing our jobs.
Counsel Milks.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to make the point that the ratio drops, okay. Like Joe alluded to, once we hit below 70%, our reimbursements are stopped. We don't get reimbursement for homestead, we don't get reimbursement for our veterans, we don't get any of the reimbursements that we usually would get because they will withhold those reimbursements. So we're going to lose that in valuation. Also, if we allow that ratio, overall ratio, to drop and a large commercial comes in and says, oh, hey, your residentials are at 55%, but you're assessing this commercial at 90%, they're going to win an abatement and we're going to lose millions. Because they're going to say, I want to be assessed at 50% like you are, the multis and the single families. So we open ourselves up for some huge abatements if we don't keep those classes of properties as close together as we possibly can.
I think you may have gotten to my question, and that was, the source of the loss of 22 million. As I'm understanding, part of that is exemptions or monies we're getting from the state? That is then in part passed on to our homeowners when there's an exemption?
That's, that's accurate. And it's not quite the case. We do lose reimbursement value, but in this case, when we have, let's say we have an asset, a personal property asset worth $1 million, okay? We're at 93%. We have to actually start at 7% below that $1 million. So whatever that is. So we have to adjust asset value based on our certified ratio. It's not true for other classes of property because that's where we're at. We're already added declared ratio, 93%. So that's, that's the correct assessment level. But for other things, declared values, we have to adjust by that ratio because that's what the overall ratio is.
Thank you. I think the key for me is, we're leaving money on the table, not just from--
Right.
--a mill rate of who, what's taxed here. That's what I wasn't quite understanding. There is some money coming from outside of our municipality--
Correct.
--that we're losing.
Yes, doubly so.
How much?
Well, last year, it was 22 million on personal property.
That we didn't, that the city didn't get?
That the city did not get. That it was not, it was missing from the valuation base. That is correct.
That's valuation isn't cash in.
Right, but if you--
What is it going to cost? But when you say, your value goes up, great, my value goes up, but you take money out of my pocket. What's the cash loss to the city if we did nothing? That's what I'd like to know.
Yeah, we can provide you what, we have an estimate on what we're going to be losing on personal value, personal property value, the actual dollar value. So we'll provide that for you. I mean, there is a dollar value to that, that we'll provide, that was, that you'll see reduced in our revenue in this budget as a result of that impact.
Counsel Gary.
I'd like to get back to the comprehensive revaluation. If that's completed in 2029, how many years will it have been since the completion of the last revaluation? And also, what's a best practice? Is there a best practice for the frequency of revaluations, the full revaluations?
Absolutely.
So 22 years. 2029, 2007, 22 years will have been the gap. And best practice, if you are not maintaining 100% or very close to 100%, right around 10 years, you usually start to see a reduction in the ratio. We did not. We were holding it and so there was no need for a revaluation. And the state does not say you have to do a revale at an X amount of years. It's all based on that ratio. But once you start to see it drop, that's when you plan to do another one, to equalize everything again.
So there's going to be, I'd like, I'm--
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody. Also, isn't revenue sharing tied to this valuation stuff? That if we're not at a certain percentage, we don't get as much money as if we were at a higher level of value?
Yeah, there's certainly, so there's a couple formulas that work out for our revenue share and there are certain thresholds that, on how that calculation works. But yes, I would say that there is, there is an impact. We stay pretty close to where I believe we need to be and we have been, so we have not seen that. But it could, if we start swinging in a certain direction. But it certainly is part of that formula.
Again, to clarify, I appreciate where the, the last, what I object to is being told that this is going to happen, that we have no choice because everybody thought I raised taxes last year when we did this. They said, you do this, but you raised taxes when it wasn't my decision. I want to make sure when you say, we're going to do this, that I have the numbers in front of me that shows what it's going to cost the city. And if I have a say in this-- that shows what it's gonna cost the city. And if I have a say in this, I want to, because right now, my vote is no. If I'm voting on this, on whether or not we're gonna raise the mark, because I don't know in the last 50 years when we've ever had an appraisal or an increase in property value like we have over the last three years. This is a freak thing going on. And what I would hate to see is people get their whacked in property taxes and then next year, when they keep raising interest rates because inflation is not subsiding, and then everybody's property values collapse and now they're getting, you know, oh, well, we've adjusted the value of your property.
Any other comments?
Just a quick comment that I would vote against telling the assessing department not to do its job.
Is it possible to adjust market adjustment when the economy goes down? You can adjust it down?
We would be delighted.
We have done that before.
You'd have to get to 100%?
We have done that.
I have a question about, because of the timeline and the reality, the sense, if I understood correctly, that part of the reason that it would take till 2029 is the demand on the, on the assessing companies. Is there any possibility of having them come in and do a segment earlier? If there was, you know, I don't know, random sample or something that if you felt that that would help get you closer? Or is it really crazy to do that off table and not do it all at one time?
There are various types of revales and various strategies. You could have, you know, a stepped process. However, the goal is overall equity. You wanna make sure those commercial properties are being adjusted correctly, that you're fixing those errors in in those classes and making sure you're getting the neighborhoods right. So it's ideal to do it all at once because then you get equity all at once. But that being said, there, there, it's not out of, you know, doing a stepped revaluation can can work and can make sense. But for equity, it's hard to, you would wanna implement it all at the same time because otherwise, you're just introducing more inequity into the process.
Thank you. Helpful.
And I'd just like to make sure that I add, since Counselor Whiting directed something directly at me, that I'm looking out for the people of Auburn. And I don't work for the, and I'm, if I'm not asking the assessing department to not do their job, I'm protecting the people of Auburn. My goal is to make sure that if there's a fixed income person that bought their house in 1995 and now their tax has gone up 400% from what it was 20 years ago, that's not fair. And that's not just, and that's different market and just value are two, are not the same. And I realize that the revenue, state revenue might say that's the same, but just and market value are not the same. And that's not fair to do to somebody. So I just would respectfully.
Any, sorry, go ahead.
Respectfully, I would say that if we have equity between the classes, then the assessing department is doing its job, and that's what they're trying to do. And that is the ultimate fairness that we should all be seeking to achieve.
The market rate adjustments, are they in all classes? Is that's what's being proposed? Or is this just residential and multifamily again?
So previous adjustments were to single family, pretty much. We made some ag adjustments and some other adjustments as well. Multifamily last year, we made, and a few other mixed-use property adjustments as well. Our goal going forward is not to pick on one class of property. However, since since single family is the bulk of our properties, then they get, they get the out kind of sized adjustment, unfortunately. But we are looking at other properties.
So it, I'm not sure that answered my question. So you're proposing market rate adjustments for this year, which classes?
Okay. It will definitely be single family and multifamily because we have the evidence in, we've done the studies. We have not done the studies for the rest of the classes. So at this point in time, I can't really answer that question.
And we, and actually, we are doing ratio analysis of all properties, not just, not just those. And we are seeing kind of some blips. Again, it's harder for the commercial properties because we don't have the number of sales. That's where the specialized appraisals come in. That's where, you know, kind of a more segregated analysis comes in. And that, that's more precise and 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 something that we're, that we're working on. But but we, we had conversations that we're not looking to focus on one particular class. We're looking at making sure we're getting the classes right with the data that we have. And unfortunately, some, some properties, we don't have many sales or data on, so we have to.
So we're assuming.
We, we are.
We know it's easy for residential property because there's lots of sales. We're assuming that there's this big disparity and somebody might come in and sue us for an abatement when we don't have the data. It's a software is telling us.
Well, no, we're people and we analyze the data and we are looking at all classes.
Again, I'm gonna repeat that it's people that are gonna pay the taxes that are residential that got whacked last year. And until we do this, I want, that's, I'm not gonna beat a dead horse. But I'm looking out for the people of Auburn.
So to move on in the agenda, I guess, two questions, Mr. Manager. One, there's going to be more data forthcoming to the Council about the market adjustments, correct?
Yes, you'll get more information on that.
And the second question is, what action is required to bring the question of going out to RFP? Because as I understand this timeline, the longer that we wait, the longer it would be before there was a reevaluation. So is the intent here for the city administration to bring an order forward to, for the council consideration to authorize the manager to enter into negotiations with a revaluation firm?
You'll receive that in your February meeting. Well, I believe it'll be your second meeting. We won't have that for the first meeting, but we'll have it for your second meeting. Will be an order for you to move forward, direct the manager as you stated.
Mr. Mayor, just one final question. Sorry, I'm new to this. When you make a market adjustment, we've talked, talked about the mill rate staying the same. Is it possible that we determine through a budgeting process that funds were sufficient that we could reduce the mill rate? Is that allowable with a market adjustment?
If we bring enough valuation in and we can cover the budget, then absolutely we drop that mill rate because you can't raise over the amount of money that you need. So yes, that mill rate will drop if we bring in enough valuation.
So we, so we would potentially have other options to try to, to address. I mean, a very important point that Counselor Milks has made, that we wanna try to work on that.
Yeah, I think it's important to realize that, you know, you gotta compartmentalize these items, mill rate, budget, and evaluations. Because your budget is what you will decide on when you start working through your budget process. You can make very different outcomes as a result of that process. And so you can't look at one dictating the other. There will be an outcome. There will be a mill rate that will be set based on the decisions that you make as far as the budget.
Thank you. Very helpful.
We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is overview of Main Waste to Energy.
Thank you very much.
Dan and Jonathan, why don't you come on up to this table? I'm not gonna have you talk about main waste of energy, but you have, you have other, just, it'll save some time because these updates are gonna go fairly quickly. Unfortunately, John King, who's the executive director of Main Waste to Energy, is not able to join us. But he did provide me some basic overview of main waste to energy. We try to schedule these as we go into the budget season. Not that these entities direct your budget, but there are entities that have an impact on potentially ratepayers, whether they're using our solid waste. Also, as it pertains to, as it pertains to LOPCA, which is the Lewiston Auburn Waste Pollution Control Group. And so that's why we wanna provide these updates. But Main Waste to Energy, just so, so folks will know, so that is where we bring our solid waste, is Main Waste to Energy. It's on Goldwraith Road. Your representative on that board is Counselor Walker. He's served on that board for many years. I believe he's chairing that board currently, and he has for some time. It's, it's a operation that processes 72,000 tons of solid waste per year. Several years ago, the operation shifted to also creating renewable electricity through, through clean waste as they process. And currently, they have, they generate enough power for about 2,000 homes in, in the northeast region, depending on how that hits the grid and where that is used afterwards. The, the recycling process that takes place at Main Waste to Energy has, has to do with, one component rather, has to do with the metals that come from, from that. They have made some investments over the years to be able to sift out all metals from their ash. So as that solid waste burns, there's metals that are left in that as a residual effect. They have a, they, Counselor Walker, and I refer to as probably a shaker, that it actually sifts through, through that, that solid, that ash. And then they're able to use that metal and put that out onto the market and receive revenue back from that. Their ash is disposed at Lewiston's landfill. There are probably over, well over a dozen different municipalities that participate in Main Waste to Energy. Auburn is the host site. We do receive some revenue back as being a host site for Main Waste to Energy being located here. It has nothing to do with what they refer to as tipping fees. It comes back to us as an offset of, there's no taxes to that entity, so it comes back to us as a hosting fee. The, they also run a transfer station for construction and demolition materials for other towns. And so many small towns will bring that there as well as in Auburn. And then they'll take that and that actually gets transferred to Juniper Hill in Old Town, Maine. So that's the location where that gets transferred to. And it's all based on a disposal fee. That does not, those costs do not tie back into the tipping fees for municipality and that rate that's set. They also provide other services, more of a convenience for communities. And that's processing tires, air conditioning units, batteries, propane tanks, and any other e-waste. They will process there. And again, it's at a fee for the individual that's bringing that in, more of a service. Two, two main issues, one thing I asked each of the entities to talk about. What are some of the challenges that are coming up with your, your organization that the council should be aware of? Two main problems for the facility has been dealing with personnel and then, like everyone else, the inflationary costs of just operating a business. But they've had, they've had turnover. They're still working through their workforce challenges. They've had to raise the tipping fees to address some of the expenses that they have been dealing with and to increase pay to make sure that they are meeting the market demands for, for their workforce. And, and they'll continue monitoring and adjusting those as need be. The board sets the, the tipping, tipping fees and they'll continue to monitor that. They hold monthly meetings, most of them. Counselor Walker, I believe they've done right at the facility most of the time, other than I think their annual meeting. So if any of you would like to attend that, to see the operation, or if you'd like a tour, John King, who's the executive director, said you're more than welcome to have a tour. Just reach out to me and I'll help coordinate that with, with John to make that available for you. And obviously, if you have any questions, Counselor Walker's really knowledgeable about what takes place there at Main Waste to Energy, and we'll certainly answer it. Counselor Walker, did I leave anything out?
Well, it's operated by 12 towns.
12?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and everybody, of course, has a share in it. We're the biggest share. I think we're a little over 55% of the business. We bring tons and tons of trash out there, so there isn't anyone that comes anywhere near what we do. We do over 640,000 pounds of trash out there. It, it takes a while to fill that plant out.
Any questions you might have? Like I said, we might be able to answer those.
I always called it MLAC. When did it get changed, Main Waste to Energy? I missed that, I guess.
Several years ago now, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was like six years ago. I don't remember all the reasons why, but it was voted on, it was passed.
Any other questions from the council?
No, you're just not the only one, because unless you drive over there, you might not have noticed that the name changed.
I still refer to it as MLAC. I try to, I try to make the change, though. It's all part of their branding. They've got.
Yeah, it's the branding more than anything, because people thought it was nothing but waste out there. And that's really not the way that it's more of.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is Lewiston Auburn Water Patrol, Pollution Control Authority.
Thanks, Mayor. So I've asked Dan Goyette to, Dan is my representative. I have a seat on, as city manager, I have a seat on LOPCA or my designee. So Dan's my designee. He sits on that, that board. And, and then Dan will provide you some, some updates about what's taking place there and some of their challenges that they're faced with as well.
So brief synopsis, all the wastewater flow from your homes and businesses in Lewiston and Auburn flow to LOPCA. They handle about 14 million gallons of wastewater a day. When it rains, typically, that goes up to 20, 25 million gallons. In a big rainstorm event, they can handle up to 32 million gallons. Anything above 32 million gallons or a little bit above that, it gets bypassed into the river. And that's what you call an overflow. The, the goal of the authority is try to mitigate those and stop those from happening. That's why you have your CSO programs here in Auburn and in Lewiston, is to remove any storm water from the sewer system. As part of that, the, based on a one-year storm event, which, there's a whole bunch of math involved, but it comes out to about a 2.1 million gallon storage facility would be required to handle that first inch of rain. So that first flush, which is typically the one that carries the most pollutants, to be able to stop it from being bypassed or overflowed into the river, you create a storage tank and you fill that storage tank up during that event. And then when flows subside, you can meter that back out into the plant and get treated, so you avoid the bypass. So the authority just entered into a, well, or is entering into a contract with a design build firm to build a 2.1 million gallon circular tank in that front yard on Lincoln Street. It's at a cost of a little over $26 million. The fee or the, the cost of that is split between Lewiston and Auburn. It's based on flows. So it's a, it's a percentage. It's roughly 70% Lewiston's paying, 30% Auburn's paying. And I, by Auburn, I mean the Auburn Water, Auburn Sewer District, not the municipality. The, it's a rolling three-year average, so as Auburn removes more waste, more storm water from our sewer system and our flows go down, our percentage goes down. That's holds true for Lewiston as well. We see great progress in that, actually, the removal of Edra Little, the demolition of that provided about a million gallons a day during a rain event, removal of storm water because that system was tied directly into the sewer system. So that was a great, great help. Other than that, the system, the plant runs on an eight-hour shift. It's fully automated. It has an anaerobic digester, which means the sludge is, you introduce a feedstock, which creates anaerobic digestion, which creates a gas methane, and that's converted into power. So we actually feed back into the system and sell power. The compost facility that's out on Penley Corner is now mothballed. The authority, I'm the chair of that board as well, the authority has no plans on reopening that facility due to a number of reasons. Mostly, the regulatory environment doesn't allow us to land apply sewer sludge anymore. So there's no reason for us to have that facility. We are currently not moving in any direction immediately. The, the plan is to, over the next year, determine what direction the board wants to do with that facility. Do we wanna sell it outright? Do we wanna lease it? Do we? Do we want to do something else there? Right now, the, we would be, I think Travis, in his short memo to you, described, we're gonna obviously take the, the planning board, what's allowed uses out there. That would be part of any RFP, any type of sale of the facility. And we're exploring where and when we're gonna do that within the next year.
So we have a more detailed report from both John King and also Travis, who's the director out at the, out at the plant. Just so you have some more information that you can read afterwards. We didn't want to go through, I think Travis has about a seven-page document here, but, okay. Front to back.
Four.
Yeah. So, but you'll be able to go through that. And it gives you some history as well, you know, you know, when, when, by legislation, was it created and, and its process? And so it gives you some more history even regarding Penley Corner and, you know, that, everything that's taken place regarding Penley Corner. And, and they do work with, you know, the authority works with the state and what's allowable. And as Dan said, what's, what can they do, what can't they do? And so they've been working through that, obviously. PFAS is, is certainly something that is being regularly monitored, and it's being done there as well, and that will continue to take place. And so when they, when the Penley Corner facility went online, primarily, you know, obviously it was bio-solids from, from Lewiston-Auburn, but also included bio-solids as they were contracting from Portland and South Portland, were probably the two, two entities that were trucking that here to be processed. And that was a huge savings on bio-solids. Those bio-solids are now brought to a landfill. And so the cost for that, I don't know what...
Tremendous.
Yeah. So it was quite significant. But yeah, so you'll have some more information in your pack that I'll provide to you. And so, so you'll have that information. Again, Travis also is offering up a tour of the facility. If any of you would like to go and see the plant and see how the operation is done, you're more than welcome to coordinate with me, and I'll make that happen.
Any questions from the council? Council Walker?
Thank you. Can you tell me if, who has the right to sell off anything down there? Land as well as equipment, maybe? Or who has the right to rent the, the rent a building, if that's the way we're going?
So the authority owns, we, we own everything. It's not owned by the cities. LOPCA is, it's a legislative body. We, the, the city is a partner, but they don't hold any ownership. We have, Lewiston and Auburn both have representatives on that board who would decide, along with, there's a whole description of all of the board members, what would happen to that facility. So none of the, say we sold, say the board decided to sell Penley Corner for $1 million. That money wouldn't go to the cities. That money would go back to LOPCA and defer other payments for, say, the, the storage facility, the storage tank. The, the, we're funded, it's a 6238, it's based on flow. It's a portioned cost, 62% is roughly what Lewiston's paying. And the Auburn Sewer Department roughly pays around 38%, depends on flows. So that money would go to help save those rate users money. So the money doesn't go back to the city. The city has a say. Obviously, the planning board would be very involved in whatever happens with that facility.
Yeah, Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was told by a constituent that Lewiston is storing equipment out there. Is that true? And if it is, do they have to pay rent for the storage?
Okay, so what happened? The, it's a big giant empty building right now, because we're not operating. The authority, we have a loader, a skid steer tractor out there, because we have to mow. Lewiston was getting ready to start some work at their public work facility. Mary Ann Brenchick, who was the director at the time, sat on the board and asked the board members if we would be open to storing, helping, letting Lewiston store equipment out there for the winter. We said yes, you have to go to planning board, make sure it's all approved and all that sort of thing. The equipment, unfortunately, that process hadn't happened yet, and equipment started moving and getting brought to the facility. As soon as that happened and people found out, we stopped it. There is some equipment there right now. It hasn't been moved out. The planning department downstairs is working with our board and Travis to remedy that. There is no, the, the board isn't charging Lewiston rent for it. It's, so there is no rent.
And just to clarify, this is on your property, the LOPCA's?
Correct.
Anything further from the council?
Which, which Auburn ratepayers pay for LOPCA?
And, and Lewiston?
And Lewiston.
Yeah.
This is a temporary issue just based on a project they're doing at their facility in Lewiston? Not, this is not a long-term plan, correct?
No, it wasn't a long-term plan. The agreement was made, hey, can we store it for the winter? We'll maintain the, the property, meaning they'll plow it. So that saved, the reason the LOPCA board was on, on board with it was, hey, that means we don't have to send two guys out there to go shovel out the doors and plow the facility. Made sense for both parties, temporary until we decided what to do with it. It was supposed to be opened up to Auburn as well as the Auburn Sewer District, if they wanted to store material out there. But when the original onslaught of equipment, it was a bunch of sweepers and mowers that got brought out there, and we found out that it hadn't gone through planning yet. It was all stopped, and no one's moved anything out there since.
Anything further? If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is the Lewiston-Auburn Railroad Company.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council? You can hear me? My name's Jonathan Levante. I serve as the Transportation Director for the City of Auburn. I'm also on the Lewiston-Auburn Railroad Board and serve as its president. Some of you may already know some of the background of the railroad company, but I'll, I'll go through that quickly and give you a little highlights of where the company is. The company was chartered through the legislature in 1872. It is a private company that was capitalized by both cities. Lewiston put up $225,000, Auburn $75,000, creating a 75-25 share split between the two cities to construct a rail corridor from what's known as Lewiston Junction, connecting to the then Grand Trunk Railroad into downtown Lewiston. If you're looking for the full background, Doug Hodgkin, several years back, wrote an excellent book detailing the history of the organization. That kind of spells out some of the, the interesting details, if you're, if you're into that. The company is governed by an 11-member board. Nine are voting members. Lewiston has six voting seats. Auburn has three voting seats. They serve three-year terms. Each city has an economic development liaison. That staff member is a non-voting member of the board. While we are a railroad company, our core business really functions as a real estate holding and management company. In Auburn, we own the freight corridor from Lewiston Junction to a point on Washington Street, which is master leased to the St. Lawrence and Atlantic Railroad, which is part of the Genesee and Wyoming network of short lines. They're based in, in Jacksonville. In Lewiston, the real estate holdings are a little more complex. The Grand Trunk Depot was purchased back by the railroad company, renovated, and is now home to the Station Grill Restaurant. There are a number of properties along Lincoln Street that were acquired in the mid-2000s that are part of a more detailed adventure. We could detail you, detail for you in a separate memo. When the state was looking at creating a freight connection from Whiskassit and Dragon Cement that would have connected Brunswick up through Lisbon, through Lewiston, to the original Lewiston-Auburn Main Line. So the railroad company was provided about $3 million in a state bond to acquire real estate. Much of that at the time was multifamilies. Those were demoed. The state had a right to come back and buy that right of way from us. They did not. So now the land is, is held without restriction. A majority of that was converted into surface parking in support of Lewiston's Riverfront Island redevelopment efforts and Bates Mill parking needs as part of an agreement they have with the developer there. There are still a few undeveloped lots. I mentioned the freight corridor in Auburn. The current, the current lease is through 2043 with the St. Lawrence and Atlantic Railroad. They have an exclusive option to extend that for another 50 years. So they are the, the long-term partner to create freight activity out there. The Lewiston Real Estate generates about $35,000 a year. The Auburn Real Estate generates about $50,000 a year. The railroad company has not been active in creating new projects over the last handful of years. There have not, there's not been freight activity to justify any additional capital investment at this time. There may be some emerging. And there hasn't been further real estate expansion in Lewiston, which is where some of their previous revenue had gone. So we're accumulating and growing our, our fund balance, which isn't, isn't a bad place to be. Outside of being a real estate holding company, the Board of Directors has continued to talk about what role the railroad company can play in what I describe as rail-related economic development initiatives. We have been active with Main DOT on a number of planning fronts, on the long-range state transportation plan. We were a party to that, and we served on the advisory group for the state rail plan, which gave us the opportunity to advocate on behalf of the Auburn Intermodal Facility to ensure that it would rise up near the top of the list for potential targeted state investment to reactivate that facility. The Intermodal is currently inactive in terms of St. Lawrence-Atlantic is not completing rail-to-truck or truck-to-rail efforts. There is a lease right now from the City of Auburn, which owns the Intermodal, with a power and construction group. They're a business partner of CMP or Avon Grid and Versen up in eastern Maine. Lot of utility pole work, both larger projects, like the reliability project, which was done a few years ago, but also just general pole replacement work. So the, the city generates non-property tax revenue from that lease. The challenge with the Intermodal, which is a topic to explore in the near term, is that St. Lawrence and Atlantic, as they look to try to re-initiate activity there for Intermodal, the pricing is not consistent within the Intermodal because of the parties at play. So the City of Auburn owns the Intermodal itself and some sidings inside the Intermodal. The main line of the Lewiston-Auburn Railroad Company is leased to St. Lawrence and Atlantic, and the Rangeley Branch, which was constructed almost a decade ago now, has a separate pricing structure. So for the engineers who are daily working to assemble railcars, there's three different pricings that, that they could be facing there. And in the past, St. Lawrence-Atlantic has actually lost business development deals as they tried to normalize and set pricing, because multiple parties were looking to get paid in those negotiations. Some prospects were lost in that, and that's something we, we certainly should collectively try to address. Outside of freight, which obviously is, was the core of, had been the core of the company, LARQ has found itself involved in passenger rail discussions, going back decades. LARQ was actively involved in efforts to expand passenger rail to Lewiston-Auburn when Brunswick had not yet been decided as the path to do that. We've continued to be at the table to advocate, as both cities have chosen to advocate for passenger rail. LARQ's been in a place to do that for the last six years or so. Commissioner, this, now Commissioner Van Noe, previously Commissioner Bernhardt, had appointed me as LARQ President to serve on the state's Public Transit Advisory Council, which gave us a further voice to advocate for interest here as either council set those directions. And lastly, on trail development, LARQ has been involved in a couple of different ways in trail development, and going back to Samar Payne Railroad Park with Mayors, Huonic, and Trafton, working that deal and having, and supporting the cities and having the bridge converted. But Lewiston-Auburn Railroad donated to the city, maybe five years ago now, the corridor from Bonney Park to Washington Street, for the city to be able to pursue a trail project. And we've worked with Lewiston to engage with CSX on the Lewiston Lower Corridor that extends from behind Flower Food to LePage Bakeries to about the Sabaddis River in Lisbon, for the potential to convert that into a trail as well. So at the end of the day, the company is owned by the two cities. We seek to engage with the councils and staff leadership to understand direction for where we spend our time in advocacy and also where we might invest in projects. And I'll, I'll stop there. Certainly, if there's areas of, of further question or clarification, I'm happy to assemble materials and circulate it. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Any short questions from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, way back, it was also...
You can just throw it out, I can repeat it.
Okay. A few years, quite a few years back, results of the foreign trade zone. We let, it, the paperwork last, so we locked down. But that was one of the good projects that we had.
Yeah, so Council Gary asked about the foreign trade zone designation. That would allow some companies to avoid tariffs if they were securing raw materials and processing. The one company that was going to benefit significantly was Tambrands, who with the clout, I believe a proctor and gambler, was able to just get a congressional exemption for the particular products they were concerned about. The Brunswick Naval Air Station, the redevelopment group down there, MIRA, they have a foreign trade zone. Should an Auburn business around the Intermodal have interest in that, there's a means for that to be extended. So without having to maintain the paperwork at that time through the Growth Council, there still would be opportunities for Auburn businesses that would benefit financially from a foreign trade zone.
Great, thank you. And with that, we'll adjourn the work session and reconvene at 7:00 in the council chamber.
Two hundred thousand bucks is a lot of money in 1872.
That's right.
The January 16, 2024, meeting of the Auburn City Council will be called to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the councilors could introduce themselves, starting on the right with Counselor Gary.
Good evening. I'm Belinda Gary. I'm an Auburn City Councilor at Large.
Rick Whiting, Ward One City Councilor.
Tim Cowan, City Council for Ward Two.
Steve Milks, City Council, Ward Three.
Jeff Harmon, Mayor.
Ben Weisner, City Council, Ward Four.
Leroy Walker, Council, Ward Five.
Adam Platts, Councilor at Large.
Phil Kroll, City Manager.
The first item of business will be consent items. Agenda items one, two, and three under the consent agenda have been moved to new business pursuant to a request by a citizen. Thus, the consent agenda items will consist of items four and five, which are appointment to the Complete Streets Committee and Registration Board of Appeals. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Having been moved by Counselor Gary and seconded by Counselor Cowan, the vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion carries. The next item of business is a January 2, 2024, regular city council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections? Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Move by Counselor Walker, a second. Seconded by Counselor Milks. Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? All opposed. Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the minutes are approved. The third agenda item, communications, there are no communications this evening. We'll move on to agenda item number four, which is the first open session of the evening. Members of the public that would like to address the council on any item that is not on tonight's agenda may do so. Please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Evan Seer, 122 Granite Street. I'd like to talk about transparency, since transparency is what many of the members of the current council ran on. The very first council, the very first meeting of the council, some members made motions to rescind actions by the previous council, introduce new orders, to delay ordinances without giving public notice. These could have been placed on the agenda by amending it on Friday so everyone could know they were happening. The only reason to put these on the agenda was to hide that they would be happening from the public. A complete lack of transparency and intent to subvert the public process. At its next meeting, the council decided to table the motion to delay Lake Auburn watershed ordinances immediately prior to public comment. Many residents had spoken during public comment on the order to delay the gravel pit ordinance changes, but they weren't given the opportunity to present the public comment on the additional watershed ordinance delay because the council stole their opportunity by denying public comment with their motion to table. I'm sure that many residents at that meeting would have spoken in favor of the delay, since they spoke in favor of the other delay already. The council sought to sweep this under the rug and avoid explaining why they were changing their minds by craftily using Robert's Rules to avoid the discussion. Again, a complete lack of transparency and a slap in the face of Auburn residents. Both the mayor and Counselor Cowan told the clerk the motion to table was to appoint later in the same meeting. When the time came, the city manager reminded the mayor about taking the motion to delay the watershed zoning up for discussion. Mayor Jeff Harmon stated, and I quote, "No, because a tabled item will just die by itself." How could the mayor know that members of the council would not take up the item without talking to them before the meeting? A tabled motion only dies after one more, one more meeting of the council. How could the mayor know that the item would die because it wouldn't be taken up at the next meeting without talking about it outside of the meeting? It definitely wasn't talked about during the meeting. Anyone can watch it and see. There was zero discussion about the item in the meeting during the council meeting. Seems like the mayor and some councilors are doing a lot of political fandangling behind the scenes to make sure there's no council discussion and no public feedback on issues they don't want to discuss during the public council meetings. There are many of us who want, I'm sure there are many of us who want to talk tonight. We can't even be sure that we'll be given the chance because the council might just choose to steal your chance by tabling something. Now I'll come to something that affects me personally. The appointment process by this council is ridiculous. It's a throwback to the mid-2000s when the council was so dysfunctional that we had 11 city managers in a 10-year period. It's embarrassing. Some councilors decided to rescind previous appointments, saying they believed the previous appointments were qualified. Then they said, then they said they didn't know what the qualifications of the same appointees were. You can't have it both ways. At least one of you has said they rescinded just to create change based on a perceived public mandate. How is that not a conflict of interest, since they themselves said they were prejudiced against the previous appointments? Members of the Appointment Committee also maintained that they have zero additional information about applicants to use beyond the applications. Yet members of the Appointment Committee spent over 20 minutes discussing qualifications with at least one appointee. The committee learned nothing new in 20 minutes? Or is it that they didn't want to learn anything? I was also asked by a resident why there was no information beyond the applications because an Appointment Committee member told them there was no extra information. Are we for real? 20 minutes of extra information doesn't count? How can we trust councilors if they can't even be honest about what information they have available to them? Mind you, it's hard for residents to be able to tell what's available because the Appointment Committee only discussed things in executive session and gave zero additional discussion during an open session. I won't even go into two members of the Appointment Committee trying to prevent me from being present during parts of the meeting when I was being discussed. Who talks about someone and tries to block them from being present when they do so? We're all legally allowed to hear what our elected officials have to say about us personally. We're not Salem, and this shouldn't be a witch hunt. A complete lack of transparency and a slap in the face of Auburn residents who support transparency. Members of this council ran on a ballot of transparency. Do better like you said you would.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the council?
Good evening. My name's Jeff Cody. I live at 465 Marrow Road in Auburn. I have some handouts for the council. I don't know if somebody wants to come grab them. Couple of years ago, the city surveyed Marrow Road. They had a meeting with the residents of the road, asking for input. We all came, gave the engineering corps that was responsible at that point our feedback, and that was the last I heard of it. Based on what I heard from the town, they were supposed to start doing or repairing the road. It was a pretty major undertaking. Nothing's happened. The road is in serious disrepair. I've got some pictures I took today showing the road, the potholes that are in the road. This road is used quite a bit, unfortunately, by big trucks, semi-trucks. They're going over the road. It just continues to degrade the road. So I felt like I could come here tonight and just get it in front of everybody again to try to, I guess I heard that the company or whoever had won the bid backed out or something along those lines. I'm not 100% sure. But there's nobody, I don't think, no company ready to take on this task. And the road is just really bad. So I wanted to bring it in front of the council just to try to get it up front. If somebody needs to call me or talk to me, my number is on there. I'd be happy to share anything. We have had a couple people that have had accidents on that road because it's really bad. Not the, the construction of the road's pretty bad. This summer, somebody was going too fast on the road. It wasn't, they weren't from the area, didn't know the hill. You go up the hill and it kind of turns to the left. They died there. I've heard the crash, went out, you know, hearing people screaming and yelling and wailing because they knew that their friend had just passed away. So the road needs some attention. So I just wanted to come today to bring that to the council. If we could try to get back, the gear's going, to try to get the road repaired and fixed, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. I have had some recent inquiries by other residents in that neighborhood, and I'm happy to share with the council and members of the public the information that I shared with them. The city manager may also want to weigh in on this. My understanding is that Public Works is 90% of the way through the engineering work to be done relative to the reconstruction of Marrow Road. Also, Marrow Road is a city road, so there's no state funding available. The funding comes through our capital improvement program. The Department of Public Works does score all of our local roads, and currently Marrow Road is the highest-scoring road in their reconstruction plan. We fully expect that the city manager and Public Works will be having discussion in the upcoming budget cycle relative to the reconstruction of Marrow Road, given it's the highest road on their reconstruction list. And, Mr. Manager?
I think that sums up very well, Mayor. I think the only thing I would add is that the Engineering Department has completed their capital improvement projects for the upcoming budget. We'll be starting to review those internally with staff next week. Marrow Road is on that list. It will be within the budget. It'll be something for the council to adopt within the five-year CIP plan, and then determine whether or not to fund that in the FY '25 budget as well. So it's all teeing up for this budget cycle, which will, the council, you'll be starting to work on that in March.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, unfinished business. There is no unfinished business pending before the council. We'll move on to new business. The first items to be taken up are those moved from the consent agenda. The first item is Order 0701162024, the reappointment of Riley Bergeron to the Planning Board as a full member with a term expiration of 1/1/2027, as recommended by the Appointment Committee. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Counselor Whiting has moved to approve the, confirm the nomination. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Gary. We'll now take public comment on the nomination. If anyone would like to provide comment to the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and limit your remarks to three minutes, please. Seeing none, we'll close public comment as there discussion by the council. Is the council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative. The reappointment of Riley Bergeron to the Planning Board is confirmed. The next item is Order 0801162024, appointing Timothy DeRoche to the Planning Board as a full member with a term expiration of 1/1/2027, as recommended by the Appointment Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The item has been moved by Counselor Gary, seconded by Counselor Milks. We'll take public comment on this item. If you would like to address the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and try to limit your remarks to three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close public comment as a discussion by the council. Seeing none, is the council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative. The nomination of Timothy DeRoche to a full member of the Planning Board has been confirmed. The next item is Order 0901162024, appointing Ryan Smith to the Planning Board as a full member with a term expiration of 1/1/2027, as recommended by the Appointment Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The item has been moved by Counselor Gary, seconded by Counselor Whiting. We will accept public comment. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and try to limit your remarks to three minutes.
David Trask, County United Partridge Lane. Good evening. Many of you ran campaigns on increasing the transparency of the mayor and his council and increasing inclusivity by listening to the public. I commend that. Unfortunately, I feel the Planning Board appointment process has been neither transparent nor inclusive. The topic was not included on the December 18 meeting, and the mayor and council used the executive session to write up the rescinding motions. Is this your definition of transparency? There was no notification to the public of the agenda item. Is this your definition of inclusive? Fast forward to tonight's agenda item. The voting for the three positions was included under consent items. These items are, quote, "considered routine" and will be enacted by one motion, end quote. Consent items have no public comment. Counselor Cowan, you stated your constituents wanted, quote, "greater transparency and understanding of the open process," end quote. Have you provided this during this process? The reason stated on December 18 for rescinding the previous approved Planning Board members was that there was precedent for the incoming council to review and approve the new board and committee members. Many members of the council agreed, especially Counselor Gary and Counselor Whiting, who both sit on the Application Review Committee. You had the right to rescind appointments. It was repeatedly stated that none of the rescindments were personal, but about the process. Counselor Whiting even added that Mr. Seer was a, quote, "well-qualified person," end quote. Given that, I would have expected to see Mr. Seer back before the council for approval tonight. Longstanding precedent also includes approving renewal of existing board members if those Longstanding precedent also includes approving renewal of existing board members if those members seek renewal. Mr. Seer has almost 12 years of planning board experience, and his council whiting statement stated, as I said earlier, quote, "he is a well-qualified person." So, I ask, is precedent important, or is it only important when it serves you? Mr. Seer was replaced by Mr. Smith, someone who has not sat on the planning board, given the disparity between the experiences of the...
Excuse me, Mr. Trask.
Yes.
It's not appropriate to compare various applicants. Would you please limit your conversation to the process, and don't compare various applicants against each other?
Well, in that case, I would say that the applicant that you skipped over, and it is not here, and replaced with Mr. Seer, does not have... That Mr. Seer has much more qualifications than...
Mr. Trask?
Yes.
It's not appropriate to be comparing various applicants. The question that's before the council is the nomination of Mr. Smith. I'll give you some leeway to discuss the process, but please limit your comments to Mr. Smith. That is a question before the council.
Okay. Well, if I'm limiting to Mr. Smith... Mr. Smith does not have the experience of a planning board. He is also a Realtor with the Fontaine family team, which was omitted from his application. He has already leveraged new zoning to the advantage of a number of properties around the city. There has been a lot of public opposition to having Realtors on the planning board over the last few years, especially around zoning changes and apparent conflict of interest. I don't see how Mr. Smith is a strong candidate compared to the others that applied. I ask the council to replace Mr. Smith with a stronger candidate. Having elevated Mr. DeRoche from associate member to full voting member, there's now a vacancy. Mr. Smith should reapply for that appointment. As you said, it does not personal, precedent, and tradition matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to correct a couple factual issues. The appointment committee process is posted. There is an open session in which members of the public can comment, and pursuant to the standing order, the clerk is required to place nominations that come from the appointments committee onto the consent agenda. As was done in this case, any member of the council or member of the public can ask for that to be moved to unfinished business in which public comment is taken by the council. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council on this matter? Discussion by the council. Councilor Walker?
There's a couple of issues. For a long time, from the past, when we started this board, there has been a lot of ups and downs, and you being brand-new as the mayor, this is one of them ups and downs tonight. Back a year ago, or maybe even two, we talked about with some of these councilors that were here then, of eliminating that board. And maybe that's something that we should have done and not passed by, because I believe at that time, we had enough people to eliminate that board and bring it back to all councilors that are sitting up here, actually sitting in front of these people that want to be in these positions, and then they make their determination at that point. Not a board coming that are favorable in some cases. Some of these people know these people very well, so it gives them an advantage over the start of saying, oh, three of us already know that person. All we have to do is get one more agree with us, and he's on the board. I think this board should be dissolved, and people should be coming to the city council as a whole for their position. That's all I would like to say at that point. Other than that, I have watched many, many of these planning boards, and there is no one that sits on that planning board, any wiser to the kind of the board.
Yeah. Again, the question before the council is Mr. Smith's nomination, and certainly give councillors leeway to talk about the process, but it's not appropriate or in order to be comparing or contrasting various applicants that came before the appointment committee. As currently constituted, the appointment committee is the sole body to deliberate amongst applicants. Please continue.
Okay. The other thing that I think is wrong is that we are appointing people from the same wards, and we are appointing too many of them. You've got three people, once again, from Ward Two, and you had other applicants that wanted to be on here that are not from Ward Two. So, I think there's something that should be done about that policy as well. We don't... We shouldn't have the same people from the same wards.
Are there any other comments from the council? Councilor Gary?
Respectfully, Mr. Mayor, and distinguished members of the council, I am on the committee of appointments. The process that we used was, we got all the applications, all the councilors got all the applications, and the public was able to read them. We read them, and each of us made our own determinations. Who put in the best resume that would fit and do what we thought would be right on the planning board? I didn't vote the way I did because I didn't do my homework, or the fact that I knew of anybody, and I wasn't prejudiced on this nominee tonight. He, in my mind, if you took the names off all the papers, he scored very highly, and that is why I chose him to be on this committee. Some of the other ones that put in applications...
Please.
I'm not going to... I'm just... Those... Some of those that put in applications, one in particular, and I'm not going to name it, didn't put in a very serious...
Yeah. I understand the point, Councilor Gary, but because all of this is public, I would caution again the members of the council from comparing amongst the applicants in this hearing, and limit their comments regarding an applicant to the particular nominee before us.
Okay. This is the reason why I chose this individual, because of his resume, and what I thought he would do, and what qualities he would bring to the planning board.
Councilor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would urge the public, in the interest of full transparency, to actually look at the appointment committee packet and review the applications, each one, and then make a determination as to whether you think we're making a bad decision or not. I won't go into any more detail, but there were several applications that were responsive and one that was not.
Are there any other comments or discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Milks?
My big issue with this particular nominee is that it seems the whole process here has been incredibly political, and this, the motion to rescind, I was called at Monday afternoon as my power went out, and to say, oh, we're rescinding, we're going to rescind, I just want to let you know. And I have no doubt that Mr. Whiting knew, two weeks ahead of time, that he was going to have a motion to rescind, and that, oh, and he, you know, and it was said, oh, there was nothing personal against any of the appointments. However, it's very clear that one was left out. And so, that's what I have to say about that. I'd like to, at this point, make a motion to amend and nominate Evan Seer as a member of the planning board.
A motion to amend would not be in order pursuant to Order 0601032022. The policy is clear, by which means nominees can be brought before the council, and a motion to amend is not in order.
Point of order, please. How, Madam Clerk, how would I nominate Mr. Seer at this point for a planning board?
In this council meeting, Mr. Seer cannot be nominated to the planning board. Given the current standing order that's in effect, which is Order 0601032022, relative to the question in front of the council, which is the nomination brought forward by the appointment committee, those that are not in favor would vote opposed, and those that are in favor will vote for. If the confirmation fails, the matter will be returned pursuant to the standing order to the appointment committee. The clerk will repost the vacancies, and the appointment committee will follow the prescribed process in the order.
Got it. So, I just would like to say that I think it's a... It's very clear that this was a political move, and, you know, it's... For someone that, you know, bloviated and positioned himself to be about process and transparency through the entire last council, it was very clear that that was a political move, and it could have been put on the agenda, but you chose not to.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Whiting?
May I remind Councilor Milks that we are supposed to not make personal comments about other members, and I've been reprimanded on that, and I believe you, the same should apply to you.
I retract my bloviating comment.
Are there any other comments by members of the council? Councilor Cowan?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up. I too agree that this is a political process, and I think that political maneuvering started with the old council that was outgoing, and that there were decisions made by the appointment committee at that time, and approvals by that council after an election, where it was very clear by the city and the voters in November that they wanted change. And that was referred into my email to Mr. Seer, which I'm glad that it was raised. I think that it was a political process, and that the decision, and I stand by my decision to rescind, was to remedy what I thought was an inappropriate break with precedent, where positions should be filled when they are void by the council in play at the time. That's, I think, what the intent was by the residents who voted for change, and, you know, yeah, it was a political process, but I don't think it was just on this council that that responsibility lies.
Are there any other comments or discussion by the council? Prior to moving the question, I would remind the council that the question before the council is the appointment of Ryan Smith to the planning board. The question immediately before the council is not to consider the standing order regarding the appointments committee, nor is it to review the actions of the appointment committee that led to the nominations. The vote is strictly on confirming or not confirming the nominee. Is the council ready for the question?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the point that was raised about Mr. Smith's being a Realtor, and if that wasn't information that was in front of the committee, I would be interested from those on the committee if you feel you need more information, or is there any discussion of what steps someone in that position, it's on a planning board, how does that handle, and is that already something that's in play?
Councilman Milks?
I think the other point was that Mr. Smith used the zoning that changed to profit on some property, and then lobbied against the zoning change. I think that's somebody that... That's another reason I'm going to vote against him.
So, I'd just clarify for the council that the issue that was just raised has been raised in the past. Just to state the facts on the record, Mr. Smith received written confirmation from the Director of Planning and Permitting prior to taking the action on the lot in question, and it was permitted by the city as a grandfathered lot. Is there any other comments or questions by the council? Councilor Whiting?
Just to comment that the planning board has strict conflict of interest rules. There have been Realtors there in the past. I'm not against having Realtors on the board. I think you don't want a predominance of any particular group represented on the planning board, and I'm sure Mr. Smith, after getting the training that will be required of all the members, which I think has been postponed, but will be required of the planning board members, that he will be well aware of that obligation.
Councilor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Desired skills sets backgrounds for the planning boards in order to run, and it says desired skills. Residents, local business people, engineers or surveyors, Realtors or banking professionals, attorneys, economic development professionals, land use, planning, development professionals, agricultural use owners of land, diversity of overall membership, and mixed ward representation.
Other questions or comments by the council? Is the council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Four having voted in the affirmative and three in the negative. Mr. Smith's appointment to the planning board is confirmed. We'll now continue with new business. This is Agenda Item One under New Business, Order 1201162024, approving the liquor license for Burnt Ends Barbecue LLC to be located at 120 Center Street. This will be a public hearing and a vote. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Milks. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Walker. We'll now open a public hearing relative to this matter. If there's anyone that would like to provide testimony to the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there discussion by the council? Is the council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. The next item of business is Order 1301162024, amending Order 17112182023, previously adopted by the city council on 12/18/2023. Correcting the language is outlined in Section 26-25 of the Code of Ordinances. As explanation to the public and reminder to the council, this was an action that was previously taken relative to approving constables, in which there was an inadvertent change of language, in which they were shown as civil process servers. This action would correct that to constables, and it would remove Mr. Edgely, who is no longer necessary for him to receive constable status. Is there any public comment on this item? Is there discussion by the council? Excuse me. Yes, thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Moved, just presented.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Whiting and seconded by Councilor Walker. Is there any public comment on this item? Is there discussion by the council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. The next three items of business are interrelated. They're related to the discontinuation of the Regulatory Advisory Board pursuant to the discussion in the January 2 workshop. the discussion in the January 2nd workshop and the reinstatement of the Board of Assessment Review and the Zoning Board of Appeals. The first item to be taken up is Ordinance 0301162024, amending Article 5, Division 2, Sections 2-430, 2-431, 2-433, 2-434, 2-435 and 2-441 of Auburn's Code of Ordinances and striking all language referencing the Regulatory Advisory Board. There'll be a public hearing and a first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Cowan. We'll open the public hearing. If there are any member of the public that wishes to provide testimony to the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there discussion by the council? Is the council ready for the question? The vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cowan?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, Counselor Weisner?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Platts?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Six having voted in affirmative and one voting present and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item will be Ordinance 0401162024, amending Article 5, Division 2, Sections 2-430, 2-431, 2-432, 2-434, 2-4th, excuse me, 2-433, 2-434 and 2-435 of Auburn's Code of Ordinances and reinstating the Board of Assessment Review ordinance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Whiting. There will be a public hearing on this item. Any member of the public that wishes to provide testimony to the City Council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, is there a discussion by the council? Council ready for the question? The vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cowan?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Abstain.
Counselor Weisner?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Platts?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Six having voted in the affirmative and one having voted present and none opposing, the motion is adopted. The next item of business is Item 5, Ordinance 0501162024, amending Chapter 60, Article 15, reinstating the Zoning Board of Appeals ordinance. Public hearing and first reading. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Walker, seconded by Counselor Whiting. There's a public hearing on this issue. Any member of the public wishing to provide testimony to the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address and try to limit your count, your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing as a discussion by the council. Council ready for the question? The vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cowan?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Abstain.
Counselor Weisner?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Platts?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Six having voted in the affirmative, one having voted present and none opposing, the motion is adopted. The next item is Item 6, Ordinance 0601162024, amending Section 2-466 of the Auburn Code of Ordinances, correcting the Planning Board compensation language. This is a public hearing and a first reading. As explanation, this is an error and corrections item. Some time ago, the City Council decided to extend compensation to the Planning Board members and there was an inadvertent reference left in the ordinance that it would be an uncompensated board. If this, we'll open the public hearing. If there's members of the public that would like to testify, please approach the podium, provide your name and address and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Excuse me, sorry. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Cowan, seconded by Counselor Whiting. We'll now open the public hearing. Seeing none, is there discussion by the council? Counsel Gary?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, this is more or less on the cover sheet. It's, am I reading something? It's not quite right.
Where is it?
Apparently there is a typo. Mr. Manager?
Yeah, I would just state that in the last sentence, it just says when this was adopted, the compensation language in Section 2-466, Paragraph A, that stated members shall serve without compensation. The language says did get, get removed. It should have said didn't get removed. So that's a, an error on the, on the drafting of this, but it's not within the order.
Does that answer your question, Counsel Gary?
I thought my eyes were going.
Are there further comments or discussion by the council? Council ready for the question? The vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cowan?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Weisner?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Platt?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Seven having voted in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion's adopted. Next item of business will be Item 7, Order 1401162024, directing the Sustainability and Natural Resources Management Board to create a solid waste and recycling plan to be presented to the City Council no later than August 19th, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Cowan. We'll accept public comment on this item. Any member of the public that wishes to make public comment, please approach the podium, provide your name and address and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Is there discussion by the council?
I've got a question with regards to this. Was this subcommittee, the recycling committee of a couple of years ago, was that the same subcommittee of the same Natural Resources Committee?
So there is a sustainability committee which is the prior recycling committee in the reorganization. The cognizant committee to the City Council is the SNRB. I'm sure that the SNRB will very likely ask the Sustainability Working Group to be the group that does the work for them.
Because I remember, we asked them once, we, in the previous council, to come up with a plan.
Yeah, I, I think that if my memory serves.
They were asking them to do another one.
Yeah, well, yes. My understanding is that they did write a plan three years ago. It was focused just on recycling and I think this order is broader as I read it. It's encompasses not only recycling, but the solid waste disposal.
Will it be encompassing talking about markets and what's available to recycle and, you know, what's cost effective to recycle and that type of thing? Is that going to be included in this order or is it a broad order?
It's a broad order. I think that there's.
I would request, I guess, then, that they add in some market analysis. That certainly would be helpful to me. That current market values of different recycling things, what the market is, how it gets, you know, where we can send that stuff. That would be valuable to me.
Yeah, and I see a member of the Sustainability Working Group in the audience and I'm sure that she'll convey Counselor Milks' sentiment to the SNRB should they be directed to complete this study.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Is there any other comments or questions by the council? Is the council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. The next item is Item 8, Order 1501162024, appointing Mayor Jeffrey Harmon to serve on the Maine Municipal Association's Legislative Policy Committee with a term expiration of June 2024. For clarification for the council, this is the unexpired term and the seat was previously filled by Mayor Leveque. Is there a motion?
A move to, to approve.
Moved by Counselor Whiting. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Cowan. Is there any public comment on this item? If so, please approach the podium, provide your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. We'll close public comment as there discussion by the council. Is the council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. That concludes new business. We'll move on to Agenda Item 7, the second open session. Members of the public that would like to address the council can approach the podium and provide your comments on any issue not on tonight's agenda. Please provide your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes.
Evan Seer, 122 Granite Street. I actually cannot believe that after the first public comment session and hearing members of the council bloviate over how public and transparent they were, that there are members of this council that are still going to let a tabled item die without explaining to residents why they're going to let it die. There are residents on social media who were in full support of the delay of the Lake Auburn Watershed zoning ordinances. And the only explanation that any of us have from anyone is Mayor Harmon saying to the manager, "A tabled item will die." I understand some members of the council voting to table it because they voted against it to begin with. I think that members of the council who voted for that when it was not. Okay? Who forced the mayor, I mean, who forced the manager to work with legal counsel and spend our tax money to develop a new ordinance, okay, prior to the next council meeting in order to have, in enough time to have public notice. If, if, if members of the, those members of the council were so committed to it, I think they owe it to the public to take it off the table, suspend the rules right now and at least explain why you're choosing to table it. I've been at this game a long time. I get it. I understand why it's being tabled. I could explain it right now, but it's not my job to do so. It's the job of those counselors who voted to initiate that process, who then voted to table it without public notice. Neither public notice on tabling, no public comment allowed on tabling because the tabling occurred before public comment. It is incumbent upon you to explain yourself. If you want to be the counsel of transparency, you better get on and do it.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to make comment at this time? Seeing none, I would remind the members of the public in the council of the, the order that is in question here that was tabled. There was extensive discussion amongst the council and staff at the work session and
Not during the council meeting.
And during the work session, the staff indicated that there would be significant operational issues if the date was, the applicability date was changed. The council then tabled the order and inserted a date in the order directing the staff to work with various stakeholder groups to develop alternative language. And I would certainly entertain any counselor if you want to make further comments on this matter. If none, we'll close the open session and move on to reports. For the mayor's report, my only item would be that the Auburn Water District Board of Trustees will be meeting at 4:00 PM tomorrow at their offices, at the water district offices. And we'll go on to city councilor reports. Counsel Gary?
None at this time since my only appointment, I mean, my only committee was the appointment one.
Counsel Whiting?
Auburn Nordic Ski Association has plenty of snow, so skiing is good. It was actually good before today because the grooming crew did a good job getting, getting some skiable snow out of not very good snow. And I would like to congratulate Ms. Condit and Ms. Garcia, who both had top 10 finishes in the Roy Varney Cross Country Race.
Counsel Cowan?
The Lewiston Auburn Transit Authority meeting was not held this past month. There were some questions that they wanted to get clarification to bring to the group, so I'm looking forward to the meeting in February. I think there's some, a great deal of work to work on that, including the budget, so I'll keep you posted on that.
Counsel Milks? Counsel Weisner?
Nothing.
Counsel Walker? Counsel Platts?
Yep, update, thank you, Mr. Mayor, update from the last school committee meeting two weeks ago. That meeting was predominated by updates from all of the school principals about the state of the schools, identifying common metrics between all schools such as kids not showing up to school, math scores, reading scores and a number of other normalized metrics. It's really interesting stuff. It gives you a good sense of the state of the schools and where they've been gaining as well as sometimes not gaining from year to year. So that information, I think it's probably posted on the Auburn School website. If it's not, I can hunt that down for you, but for anybody who's interested, it's, it's enlightening information. And I guess lastly, just a shout out to the Public Works folks who are out there moving snow. I know I saw one today and just thanked them, so if you do, please thank them. They bust their butts for us and days like today, grateful to have them as part of the city staff.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Just a couple items first. The first Legislative Policy Committee meeting from Maine Municipal Association will be held later this week. The new legislative session of the state is in session and moving forward on bills. The LPC will be taking up several of these during, during our first meeting and will be discussing and giving direction to MMA on how best to proceed in representing municipalities. Second is orientation process for the city staff. One thing that we've been looking at is how to ensure a good intake of our workforce. As many of you know, personnel, hiring of personnel and onboarding personnel are really critical for an organization. One thing that had not been done, I think to its fullest extent, is just the orientation process for our new staff. So we have implemented, starting January 1, that process. All new hires that start within a month all come in on the same date. They go through an orientation process of two days prior to actually going to their department. That orientation process allows them to have a really good understanding of internal process within the city as well as policies that are reviewed that cross all departments. And, and then they also receive a tour of facilities. We have many employees that might work for our department and have no idea, which we heard today. Today was our, our first, our first session. They actually, because it was our first session, we went back several months and brought new employees in. They did not know we had a indoor turf facility or an arena because some departments, individuals just come and work with one department. So it's good for them to have a good understanding of the entire operation of the city. So that process is underway. It impacts all departments, whether it's a new police officer or firefighter coming in. Everyone will start that day and have that onboarding. So we are looking forward to seeing great outcomes from that. Our last item is regarding the City Council retreat. Last item is regarding the City Council Retreat. That has been scheduled for February 3, at 8:00 AM to noon. You'll be here at Auburn Hall, be in the community room. We will work through goal setting, budget priorities, and then the budget schedule as well with each of you. We'll have a good discussion on that. And then we are also offering a tour of facilities. So if members would like to see facilities, we'll have a complete agenda and schedule available to the public. So if a public wanted to, no one, we're going to be at No Way Savings Bank Arena. We'll have that time on there, and anyone in the public could come and also participate in that tour. It'll be available. And so we'll be promoting, we'll be pushing that out on January 31 with the full agenda. And that's it. Thanks.
The next agenda item is the December 2023 Finance Report. Ms. Earl?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Kelsey Earl. I've met most of you. I work in the Finance Department. Jill Eastman did prepare this, but we discussed it at length, so you have the report made available in your packet. But in summary, the revenues and expenditures are where they're expected to be at this time of year. There were no significant outliers that would be of concern. It's, like I said in summary, there's not too many comments to make because there are no significant outliers. But based on this report, does anyone have any questions?
Are there any questions or comments by the council? Is there a motion to accept the financial report?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Milks. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Weisner. The vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative, none in the negative. The report is accepted. The council will now be moving into executive session. For members of the public, there's no anticipated actions after the executive sessions. The first item will be executive session for labor contract discussions pursuant to one MRSA, subsection 4056D. Is there a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Counsel Whitey, seconded by Counsel Cowan. The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? The council will be in executive session.